All set.
Okay, this is the, the meeting of September 22nd, 6:30, the Board of Selectmen. In accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20. The executive portion of this meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode, hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. No broadcast of executive sessions will be made. What I need now is a motion to go into executive session.
I'll make a motion, Dan.
Second, Brian.
Any discussion, Ri- Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy? Randy, you need to unmute yourself. Oh, you're nodding, okay, so it's all right. All right, and I'll, and I'll say yes, we're going into executive session and we will come back in open session as soon as it's finished.
Okay. We're recording.
Okay, we would like to open up the, we're returning from executive session and I forgot to announce why we were in executive session. It was in accordance with Mass General Law, chapter 30A, section 21A, exception two, that it conducts strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions of a contract negotiation with non-union personnel, and three, to discuss strategy with respective collective bargaining or litigation. So now we're back in open session in accordance with Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20. This meeting will be held remotely in an online conference mode, hosted on zoom.com and members of the public will not be able to physically attend. The meeting will be broadcast live on Comcast Channel 12 and can also be viewed via livestream at WHCA TV. It was subs- it will subsequently be broadcast on youtube.com. We'll begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
I say.
The United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we'll open the meeting with a moment of silence. This meeting is being recorded and televised by the local cable company. I'd like a motion to approve bill and payroll warrants.
A motion by Dan.
Second by Brian.
Any discussion? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Dan, oh yes. Acceptance, motion to accept correspondence in the read file?
It's a move by Dan.
Second, Brian.
There's any discussion? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
I'm staying.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And, oh yes. Approval of the meeting minutes, open session, September 8th, 2020.
It's a move by Dan.
Is there a second?
Second, Brian.
Is there any discussion? Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll stand because I wasn't present. It has reached 7:05, it's exactly 7:05, amazing planning, and now we have a joint meeting with the Board of Health to fill a vacancy. Frank, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, we have a vacancy that resulted from Bruce Farley's resignation and in order to fill the position, we need to be jointly with the Board of Health to appoint an interim person until the next election. Mary Kelly, who I believe you see on your screen, is a former member of the Board of Health who has expressed a willingness to step up and take the reins again and since she's the only one that stepped up, I'm very grateful that she did. And I would like to introduce her to the Board of Selectmen as a candidate for appointment to the Board of Health.
Frank, if I may, I think you mean Eric Jubert's resignation.
Right. I'm sorry. Picking up my boards, yeah.
Right.
Okay, welcome, Mary. Unfortunately, I can't see you on my screen and I, I don't know who's here besides Barbara from the Board of Health either because I can't, I, is there anyone, Barbara, beside you?
You're muted.
Unmute yourself, Barb. Or can someone unmute Barb?
Okay.
There we go.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Who is, who is with you, Barb?
Don Farley, Don Farley's supposed to be.
Okay, so it's, you're the only representative of the Board of Health?
Well, I guess I am.
Okay, so it'll be the Board of Selectmen plus Barbara.
Yeah.
Would someone like to move that we appoint Mary Kelly?
I'll make that motion, Dan.
I'll second that, Brian.
Okay, is there any, is there any discussion?
Carl, I just want to check on something. I think we require a quorum from both boards. And it was my understanding that Dawn Farley would be here, so.
Mine too.
Maybe she's lost in connection, let me try her cellphone. Hey there, are you starting the meeting? Oh, we're waiting for you. Do you want the number to call in? Okay. All right, thanks. She, it slipped her mind, she's pulling over right now and is going to connect.
Okay.
Via iPhone.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Since we need a little filler here, it would be a good time to thank Mr. Jubert for his many years of dedicated service to the board in the town of Whitman. It's definitely a tough time that we live in to be on the Board of Health.
Absolutely.
I'm sure, so definitely hats off to Mr. Jubert for the time he spent working for the town of Whitman.
Thank you, Brian. I more than, more than doubled that, Eric did a yeoman's job and took it very seriously and it was a pleasure to have him on the board. It was also a pleasure to run into him once at Good Sam when I was having some blood work. It's, it's, it's kind of fun to meet people that you know in one area in another area.
All right, can you see me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Just, just hearing you is just fine.
Okay, good.
Thank you, Dawn.
I am so, so sorry, I apologize.
No, no, no problem, no problem, Dawn. Okay, would someone like, we have, actually, we have made a motion to appoint Mary Kelly. We just needed you to show up, Dawn, so that we would have a, a quorum of the Board of Health to be able to vote on it. Are there any questions, does anyone have a Mary?
I don't have any questions.
Just a big thank you for coming forward.
We'll, we'll move to the vote then. Barbara?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Dan? Dan?
He's muted.
I wish to be thankful, but it would be nice if you could vote. Dan?
Yes.
Very good, and I'll vote yes too. Mary, welcome back to the Board of Health, we're really happy that you stepped forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, takes care of that. Now, next item on the agenda is at 7:10 and at 7:40, we have meetings with the Community Paradigm Associates and Municipal Resources, Inc., in that order, and they are the two companies that have filed applications to be our search team for placing Frank. They've both handed in sizable documents, more information than I can remember receiving from a group, groups like these. And I'm wondering if, instead of having them make a, a long presentation, that it would be appropriate for us to, to talk to Community Paradigm Associates with, and ask them any questions that we might have about their application, then do the same with Municipal Resources. Does the, the Board think that that's a, an okay way to go about it?
Can I leave? I can leave, right?
You can.
All right, thank you, Frank, thanks Frank, I'm sorry, sorry, everybody. Bye.
Okay, Brian, Justin, Randy, and Dan, what do you think about going forward with our asking questions based upon our reading of the material? We've had it for a couple of weeks.
No, I have no, I have no problem with that, I mean, we certainly got enough information.
Right.
Okay, well, then that's what we'll do. Community Paradigm Associates is up.
Mr. Chairman?
Anyone?
Yes. For the benefit of the Board, over the last week and a half, I've reached out to references for both companies and all of the people that I've been able to contact have had very positive things to say about both organizations. So from the standpoint of references, they're both spoke highly of, wanted to be aware of that.
Who was here, who was here representing Community Paradigm today?
Good evening, this is Bernie Lynch. Right, and I'm, and I'm joined, I'm joined by John Petron and Sharon Flaherty. They would, all of us would be the ones that would be working on this recruitment.
Okay, thank you. Can I, can I ask you just one question? And that is, tell us why we should choose you over anybody else?
Because we're better than everybody else.
Good answer.
Are we, are we done?
Yeah, that would be good.
No, I, you know, I think that we have the most extensive experience in Massachusetts over the last several years. We have in excess of 50 searches that we've done with the most active recruiting firm in the, in the state for town administrative positions. We've done a number in this very region, as, as you probably know, we're located in Plymouth, Massachusetts. We recently, within the last couple of years, completed Pembroke, Plington, East Bridgewater, Lakeville, Rockland, and we're currently working with the town of Kingston. We know the region well, we know the manager world very well. John and I served as managers for, I served for 30 years, John served for almost 40 years here in Massachusetts. We know all the managers, we know all the assistant managers, we know many of the department heads throughout the cities and towns of the Commonwealth. We've both served in manage, in leadership roles in the Managers Association and different organizations. We both are involved with Suffolk University with the program to develop new managers for the Commonwealth. John, in fact, is currently the coordinator, I previously served as the coordinator of that program, the Suffolk and Mass Municipal Association Certificate Program in Local Government. Sharon has extensive experience in communications and marketing, coming out of the world of journalism and private sector communications. So, you know, together, we think we form a very good team that is able to find candidates, research those candidates, and work very closely with you in helping you make the right decision.
Terrific, thank you very much, Bernie. Does anyone else have questions of Community Paradigm?
Kyle, if I may, I mean.
Yes, yes, Brian, I mean Danny.
Dan, I, I mean, I've looked at both of them. The first thing that struck me is the fact that I like the fact that the, it came within the scope of what town meeting approved of as far as an amount to be spending on this research. I like, that was the first thing that jumped out at me, I like that, at least they know what town business is all about. And the list of towns in, basically in our area is very impressive. So they've, with, with a lot of, a lot of different towns and a lot of same towns, like and I, you know, that's around us and, you know, with the Rockland, the East Bridgewater, and the Lakeville, and Plington, and Pembroke, so, and Rockland, so, I mean, it's impressive, their, their packet, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dan. Yes, Brian, do you have a question, Brian?
Yeah, yeah. First, a comment, I think I, what I like about this outfit is the fact that they are kind of local and they got a finger on the pulse of the South Shore and, and how things operate here. And I, I like that kind of a scenario. The question I have is, in a quick overview, about how long would this process take on average?
On average, we, you know, we, we used to say it took 16 weeks, we, we've got it down now to 14, we've done it in as short as 11. Everything has to line up to do it that quickly. You know, we like to come in and we like to find out about the community, that takes a couple of weeks to talk to each one of you, to talk to the department heads that, you know, would give us information about their operations. You know, a key part of what we do is, we included in our proposal is a position statement or a position profile that lays out what Whitman is all about, what the issues are that are facing the community, what the organization looks like, and what you are looking for, for the ideal candidate. We want to know that upfront so that we go out, you know, we have hundreds of people in our database, we're contacted, we hit, we had 5,000 hits to our website every, Sharon, you handle this, every month?
Every month.
And so, you know, we want to find you the right candidate, so we want to know what you want. Then we go, you know, then we go out, it takes about four weeks to do the active recruiting and the advertising and the posting, so we're up to about six or seven weeks and then it's basically, I think the way we're envisioning it with Whitman is that we would deal directly with you, there wouldn't be a screening committee, so we would then have to do our preliminary screening over a course of a week or so, we can have, and then we're in front of you to present you with the, with the names, and you have to go through the interviewing process. So we're up to about 10 to 12 weeks total at that. But, you know, we can, we can customize, we can, you know, work faster if possible, we just don't want to give up the quality in terms of what we're doing.
Thank you. We'll probably have a Supreme, we'll probably have a Supreme Court Justice before you guys finish.
Well, that's possible, so.
But that's not necessary.
I think they've already done that, they've already done that search though, so.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Anyone else have any questions of Mr. Lynch?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, I'm actually looking at, I got sent this afternoon the position statement you guys have just done for Kingston. That's very in-depth and actually answered one of, one of my questions was what was the process to develop that? So is that meeting with us individually? Can you just tell me a little bit more about that process, how you develop?
Yeah, yeah. Actually, it is, it's, it's, you know, we, we do it now mostly through Zoom conference calls that we talk to you one-on-one, we get your information, we have questionnaires that we send out to the department heads to get information from them about their operations. We grab many of your, as you could see from that Kingston profile, we actually grab a number of documents from your website, link them in through hyperlinks into the document. But no, we spend time, we spend probably half an hour to an hour with each one of you and, you know, we get information from Frank and some of your key department heads to assemble that. And if I, if I could, I think the value of that document is, one, it's a great process to go through. Frank has been there for a while now as your town administrator, you know, this is a good time to step back and say, okay, what do we really like about what the way that we're operating and what the issues are that we're facing? They're not quite the same perhaps as what the town was facing when Frank was hired, so now maybe we have to look and say, okay, now we need something, you know, some prioritization over in a different area because the organization's been built up by Frank in another way. So that gives you an opportunity to do that. Then we use it as a recruiting tool and then it also becomes a very important tool for you and for us in assessing the candidates. So there's a, there's a number of different purposes that that document serves.
And I guess it's just my follow-up question is, given the COVID situation, how are you, how many applicants are you seeing out there? Is it a pretty robust job market, you know, candidate pool right now or?
Yeah, you know, we really haven't seen a real drop-off in the number of candidates that have been coming in. The, the biggest drop-off we found actually was a community that we were doing that had, it went out pre-COVID and its deadline was in the heaviest point of COVID and that one, they actually had less candidates, they're a very remote community as well, so that has an impact. But we've generally been getting 30 to 40 applicants, I would say, for, for most of our positions. The town of Holliston, I think we had 42, you know, so we, we are in that range. We've had very strong pools of candidates in, in the last few searches we've done, so it's, it's, I'm surprised that we haven't seen some sort of drop-off, but it's been actually very good. And the candidate pools actually have been quite healthy the last few searches we've done as well. So we've been quite impressed with the pools, we're seeing folks, you know, ready to make that career change. And having done so many this year, you know, we know who the candidates are out there right now, so we've, we've probably interviewed several of these folks who have been in contact. I've already been contacted, wondering if, you know, we're doing the Whitman job because there's interest out there already from people who have a knowledge of it. It is, it is interesting that we, we, we get noted, we get called from can, potential candidates as soon as they find out there's an opening before towns even bring us on board.
Justin, did I see your hand up?
Yeah, I was gonna, that actually raised an interesting other question for me. So, do you see a lot of repeat candidates since you tend to work in the same area?
Yes, and we also bring in new candidates as well. So, you know, the repeat candidates are the ones that, you know, you have to be, sometimes it's just a case where it's just not a good, you know, match, and in other cases, it's, there's a reason why they're repeat candidates and we try to weed those out for you.
I like. And then I guess my, my other question was, do you see a potential conflict in running the Kingston Town Administrator search at the same time as, as this one?
No, I don't, in fact, we've run across this before, we did Westwood and Dedham at exactly the same time, Weston and Wayland at exactly the same time, Truro and Wellfleet exactly the same time. So it's, we've run across this before and we actually thinks it, think it, it helps us, it's like having restaurants next to one another, you can sort of feed off of one another, there are candidates that might match at one place but not in another, so. And it gives us a good sense of the regional issues that are on there as well.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question? Okay, why don't we move to Municipal Resources? Who is here representing Municipal Resources? I don't, I don't see anyone on my screen, Frank.
I think, I think we. It may not be here.
They might not be here yet because it was 7:40? Was advertised as 7:40?
Do you want me to present, do you want me to present for Municipal Resources? I'd be happy to.
No, that's all right, I was going to ask the same question, you're right.
Frank, I did see Bob Mercier here, but he seems to have disappeared.
We have a, we're all very, we, we stay out of each other's way when we do these interviews.
Okay.
But we're happy to give you some more information about Community Paradigm, but if you want, we can, we actually, we're, we're on our way to, we're on our way to Grafton now, so that's.
All right.
That's right.
One question, Bernie.
Sure.
What happens if you select a candidate, bring him to the board, the board says, yeah, we like you, we're gonna hire you, hires the person and then a month later, things fall apart?
If, we will come back in and we will redo the search, keep it going.
Not that I would expect that to happen.
No.
Just a question.
Yeah, no, and we've had, you know, and oftentimes, what's more likely to happen is, and it doesn't happen a lot, Buzz is here now, so, is that you will have, you might have a breakdown in contract negotiations, that's happened, I think, in two occasions that we've, one occasion we've run across.
That was turn you loose.
Yeah.
Doesn't happen often, but it can occur.
Yeah, but we would work with you again to get it.
And now you do have Buzz and Bob here, Bob, Buzz, how you guys doing?
Hey, guys.
Okay, we have, who do we have representing Municipal Resources? Again, my screen has only nine faces on it and I don't see you there.
I'm Bob Mercier and I know Buzz is somewhere on.
I'm here.
Bob, Bob, okay, Bob Mercier.
We will, if we, to the board, we'll, thank you for the time, we'll let you interview these guys if that's, and we'll, we'll wait to hear from your decision, but we appreciate the time.
Thank you very much, thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, so we have Bob Mercier and Buzz something?
It's easy, Stapchinsky.
What's, wait a minute, wait a minute, Buzz, what's your last name? I love it, thank you very much.
He's Irish, I think.
That's right. My, my wife married me, her last name was Ducey, she went from like four letters to 11. What a deal.
Well, my last name is Kowalski and my wife's maiden name is Pierkowski, so she actually, she lost one syllable, that was all. But it kind of, it, we couldn't do a slash name, that wouldn't have worked. Okay, Buzz, what we've, what we've done with the, with the other candidate is that since we had read, you both passed in a lot of material for us to go over, instead of we've read it, we went over the material, rather than have you give a, a long presentation, we opened it up to questions from the board of you to satisfy any questions they might have from reading your material. I hope that's okay with you guys. I, I started off by asking a silly question and then the question was, and it can be either to Barbara to Buzz, why should we hire you instead of the other guys?
We face this a lot, you probably could tell that both Buzz and I know John and Bernie very well. You know, we're in the same group, basically, and, you know, we, Bernie does a great job, we think MRI does a great job, and why should you hire MRI? We've been at this for 30-plus years, I haven't been, nor has Buzz, but MRI's been at this for 30-plus years. We have a, a long reach throughout New England and I say that by simply letting you know that I just finished up in Williston, Vermont, which is a town just outside of Burlington, it's about 10,000 people, they're replacing a 23-year retiring town manager. We've done work in Rhode Island, we've done work, Buzz just finished up in Sacco, Maine for a town manager. And of course, we've done a ton here in Massachusetts, so, Kyle, to your question, why us? I just think our reach is all of New England and it's not only just management searches, we do a lot of management studies in communities, we do a lot of work, you probably saw that with police and fire departments, organizational studies, a lot of searches, we've got a number of those searches going on because specifically in New Hampshire right now for fire chiefs and police chiefs. Alan, our president, and you saw his resume, he does a lot of that because of his background, but on staff, we also have retired police chiefs, retired fire chiefs, retired DPW directors because we've done that too. So we, we have been in this business for a long time, we've had some high-quality towns, obviously, that we've been dealing with, and I heard you ask the question of Bernie, how do you do all of these things and mix and matches, you're doing two or three things together? We faced that about a year and a half ago, we had Bedford. We had Bedford, Concord and Lexington, Massachusetts. In addition, we were just, just beginning to think about the Westboro job that we got. And, and that is juggling a lot of stuff in one time. From our perspective right now, and I heard you talk about some of the other communities, we have chosen during this COVID time not to take on some communities that are just out of our reach. For instance, some of the, some of the Cape towns, the Wellfleets of the world and the Troros, and I know Province Town was open. We chose not to even bid on that because, as you know, a lot of this stuff is now done because of COVID, done through Zoom meetings. And it's not that personal touch. And we want to be involved in that personal touch. And I know, talking to you folks, we, we'd still have to do Zoom meetings. But we also think, for instance, when I was up in Williston, I did go up there to meet with the selectmen individually. I met a couple of their department managers individually, socially distancing, obviously. But it gave, it gave me, and Buzz did the same thing out in Hadley, it gave me a real good feel. You know, sometimes you need that personal connection to really get what you folks as the appointing authority want. It's hard over this type of media, if you know what I mean. The final thing I'll say is that both Buzz and I just finished up in Williston. He finished up in Hadley. We have nothing on our plate right now. You would be our committed community.
Okay, thank, thank you very much, Buzz.
And if, and if I may just jump in, you know, what we bring is experience, you know, in the trenches, Bob has managed a number of communities. Most recently Burlington, we can tell you his resume, Billericca. So, you know, he's, he's done the job of a town manager, town administrator and myself. I was manager in Wilmington for 10 years and then in, most recently, Andover, Massachusetts for 25 years. And, you know, we've, we've sat in the seat that you're looking to fill and we have an understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the administrator and the kind of interaction that that person, to be successful, that person is going to need with the Board of Selectmen, you know, and the community. As Bob mentioned, I did Hadley in, in the middle of COVID. We, we started the search, I think the original date for resumes was like April 1 and we pushed that off until the middle of May. And we had a good group of candidates. You know, for a community like Hadley, we expected about 50 candidates and we had 49. And of the 49, we brought six to the search committee. And then they forwarded three to the, to the select board. And they were, you know, good, high-quality candidates that we were proud of and of presenting. And they, they've made a good selection. Now, one of the things MRI does do is we do have a guarantee that if the, if there's a problem with the administrator selected within the first year, we would redo the process. We haven't had that problem because we think, you know, we do a good job in vetting the candidates. And then, and because of Bob's years of experience, my years of experience, if they're from New England, we have a pretty good idea of who they are and what the pluses and minuses are and what skills they have and will they fit, you know, with what you're looking for in Whitman.
Kyle, can I follow up on that? Just, just to make a statement. To what Buzz says and about the guarantee, that's generally with our full-blown search because that involves a lot of other things. But I can tell you, I've been doing this since 2014 and probably placed between 30 and 40 individuals. Not one of those individuals has left their position. Except for one. And that was a position we filled from Sudbury, Massachusetts. And that was five years ago. And when, when the North Andover position opened up about a year ago, a little more than a year ago, that individual who we placed in Sudbury called us. We, we do not raid our clients. Somebody that we've placed, we owe you that. We will not raid our clients. And we didn't do it in this instance. This individual, the North, she's now the North Andover Town Manager because she's spectacular. She made a lifestyle decision. She was commuting two and a half hours each day. She has young children and North Andover was a half hour away from her. She was not dissatisfied in Sudbury. And I think as she left, Bernie did the follow-up search for Sudbury. So in all of the ones that I've done, none of our people are all still in place. So that goes to Buzz's comments about, we really vet these folks because we know them. But the most important thing to us is talking to the five of you because this person doesn't work for me. The person's gonna work for you. And we want to know what you really need and want. And you're replacing a longtime manager and our administrator. And that's not an easy thing to do. Some folks get nervous about that. We don't because we vet the people ahead of time, knowing what they're getting into. And we know some of the problems you guys have coming up. So that's all I'll say, Kyle. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Buzz.
I mean, we, you know, we know the neighborhood. We've been in your neighborhood, most recently with John Stambrook, the Town Administrator in Hanson. And then a year or two before that, Joe Colangelo, the Town Manager in Hanover. We've done work at several jobs, you know, right in your, in your basic community and your group of neighbors. So, you know, we, we know the pool of candidates that would be interested in a community of, a growing community of about 15,000 population. And in terms of just the community itself, it has a good reputation. So in terms of, of presenting it to candidates with your outstanding bond rating and the work that, you know, you, you all have done over the years. You know, you, you will get a good group of candidates and, and we make direct phone calls. It, you know, it's, that's what recruiters do. Once we get the profile, we know the men and women out there who might be looking, might be ready to move up. And we think this would be a good community, a good opportunity for them and for you with the skills, the leadership, you know, knowledge and experience you're gonna be looking for.
Thank you very much. Do any members of the board have questions? Justin?
I just wanted to ask about the, the fee structure. It looks like you, you threw two different packages at us. Could you explain a little bit about the difference between those two?
Yeah, the, the assistance package is something we do fairly routinely in some of the smaller communities, actually some of the larger communities too. A lot of those are in New Hampshire. And it's not as extensive as the full-blown package, Justin. The, the difference for us in terms of the assistance package is that's what we think we picked up from the letter we received from you. You guys want to have some control over this process and we have no issue with that. Sometimes there are screening committees set up. Sometimes there are, there's a lot of community involvement that, and that's, that's the more extensive package. If you wanted us to, to do some of those things with community meetings at night, for instance, to get input from everyone, that's, that's one of the increases that you see in the full-blown package. The assistance package, the way we saw it and reading Frank's letter to, to us was that this board has made some decisions and they think that they can make a decision as to who their manager should be or their administrator should be. We have no objection to that because frankly, that's your job. You're the chief elected officials in town. And this person, we say this all the time to communities that want us to really get involved with the, the community. Number one, you five are elected representing the community. I think you'll probably have a pretty good idea as to what you need to make this person successful, be successful in your, in your community. Number two, sometimes when you get the community involved and you get screening committees involved, again, we're not against it. Towns make decisions of what they want to do. Is people, the feedback you get from some folks is that, well, the selectmen really didn't make the decision. They got feedback from a bunch of people who thought that these were the three best people or five best people, whatever you want to do. So, you know, it's, it's a give or take on that process. We've done them both, obviously. The full-blown process is a little more, well, it's, it's more than double. And you'll see it. But what we picked up from Frank's letter to everybody is, you guys have made some decisions. You've decided, I think, that you guys can make a decision in terms of interviewing folks and who you want to interview. At the end of the day, once we vet people and you can carry that process forward and make a decision. We will be there if you need us at those semifinal or final interviews. And we'll coach you through it. We'll prepare questions for you, all of that stuff. But, and that's all in the assistance package that you go on.
And.
Thank you very much.
If I may just add a few more words onto that. One of the things that we do in either package is, you know, we'd write up a community profile. And the assistance package would be just a, you know, a couple of pages without the photographs and sort of the glossy look that would go with the, the more, you know, comprehensive, the full-blown package. We would write that up and send that to the prospective, like candidates. Use that on the MRI website, would be on your website, that prospective candidates can go to. A couple of pages with what the ideal candidate would look like after talking to you folks. The ideal candidate and some of the challenges. We'd enumerate some of the challenges that the community is faced with now or that will be faced with in the next five years. So the candidates can then align their priorities. Some of them may say, I don't want to get involved in that kind of thing. Or yeah, I've done that before and I, this isn't new to me. It's not my first rodeo and I can certainly work with the Board of Selectmen on that. And then from our discussions with you and the challenges, we would send 10, 12 good candidates. We would send them essay questions and they would respond back to us. We'd get responses from the ones that are serious. What's good about the essay questions from our perspective is that, you know, it's, it's easy today to fire off a resume. Just hit send, they eat the resume and that's great. But we want to challenge them to see if they're really seriously interested. So we'll make them do some homework. And we want to know what they know. You know, have they dealt with financial challenges? You know, have they dealt with original school district? You know, have they dealt with economic development? And give us some examples of what you have done in previous jobs. Not what you think the solution is for Whitman. What we want to know is what, what did you do in East Overshue that you think is so great? And, you know, probably three questions, two, maximum two pages per question. So, and we'll send, we'll send them to you. You can, you know, have, you would have that as background information about the candidates. So you get a couple of things there. One, you get sort of the writing skills and you'd be surprised. We're surprised all the time. In fact, when a candidate asks me, what, what can I do to enhance my, my standing? I say, have somebody who knows the English language and knows grammar and punctuation, read the damn thing. Because we've gotten, in fact, we've taken some people aside afterwards and said, you know, Joe, you, you didn't do a bad job, but you had misspellings and you, you didn't, you know, you had, you, you just didn't do a good job on your essays. And, you know, if you'd have put a little bit more time into it, we would have known you were a serious candidate. And, and so that's, you know, that, that's what we bring. So you'd have that, we would give that to you as part of the package for the, you know, whatever group you want to kind of finalize on, whether it's three, four, or five or six candidates that you may want to interview. So you'd have some background information that we will get, that the office will get on this individual. Basically, you know, what, what, we know it's not a deep dive as we have a price in there for a full-blown background investigation. And that's usually, you know, could be up to 10, 11, 12 pages on the individual. It's confidential, that would go to the, the select board. But the, the ones, what, you know, we, we give you information about each of them. Let's say the five. You want five? The resumes, obviously, the cover letters, obviously, the essays and then any other background information that we may know.
Yeah, and I, and I know that Buzz touched upon it. But the important thing for us, as we look for these quality candidates, and if you've been through enough of these searches as we have, you, you know people aren't really serious. They're looking for a job. We want to know you're serious about Whitman. And when we craft our questions, we'll ask them questions like, for instance, because I've read the Madden Report. I've read what the suggestions are going forward about a possible override. We would ask questions specific to you folks, which would force that individual to go read the Madden Report and see what it said. And, and there's other, obviously, the Whitman-Hanson School issue. I know you passed the one-year amendment. We, we may ask a question about something like that. And what would you do to steer the discussion and the dialogue so that it doesn't get? And I know there's been some nasty times between the two communities. But that, that new person is walking into that. So we want to know that they're not going to be shocked and not going to be surprised. And we'll start thinking about it before they come for the interview with you. So that's the importance of, of what Buzz talked about with the, with the questions that we ask them. And the final point I'll make on that, to the seriousness of our candidates, we have people drop out when they get the questions. Tells us something. Yeah, they're looking for a job. They're not looking to do any work. So that tells us something.
Thank you. I like the idea of the essay questions. I have been an, an English teacher for a long time and I.
You, you would, you would love correcting.
Listen, I'll be looking at, I'll be looking at you guys. Okay. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, thank, thank, thank you very much. It's been very helpful to talk to you.
Carl, Brian, Brian raised his hand before you let them go.
Oh, I couldn't see Brian. Yeah, Brian?
I think he's muted.
Brian? Where are you, Brian?
Frank, I think we might have to unmute him.
Is that better?
That's better, yeah.
All right. Having some internet issues. My wife's on a Zoom call too. So I don't know if I missed some of it. So I don't know if he, any of you gents asked, answered this question about how long this whole procedure would take. Soup the nuts.
Well, it generally takes, we always tell people about three months. And I'll, I'll qualify that by this statement. You're dealing with COVID and a lot of communities are obviously dealing with COVID today. Buzz just alluded to it. I did the same thing in Williston. We extended the period for them to respond. Because in our first response, 30 days, usually it's 30 days you give them to respond to an ad, we weren't happy with the, I guess, quality and number of candidates who responded. So what we did is we followed up with a couple of folks we knew were interested. And here's what they said, and it's credit to them, by the way. I can't leave my community right now during COVID. I want to go to that community. So if you ask the appointing authority to extend the time I can respond to, then I'll apply. In Williston, I had two good managers that we knew about that were interested in Williston, but just didn't feel it was appropriate. This was back in April, May. So you can imagine when the whole thing was just hitting us and they just felt, to their credit, they're professional managers, they just didn't want to walk up and leave their community at that time. The board up in Williston extended the 30-day period to 60 days. Those two folks who I had been talking to applied because they had informed their appointing authority. They walked through how this transition was going to happen and blah. They just didn't want to walk away at the time of COVID. So Buzz, I know, had the same thing happen in Hadley. So when I said 90 days, Brian, to your question, it's, in normal times, it's 90 days. I would hope that we can keep to that schedule, but I don't know that until we get into the process.
If, if I may, on page four of our response, we do say. If I may, on page four of our response, we do say, you know, onsite interviews in in 10 weeks. But then that gives you a couple of weeks for review yourself, discussion, and terms of a candidate. So we do lay out a timeline on page four, but Bob is right, you know, you've got to figure three months plus or minus, depending on how things go and the pool of candidates.
Yeah. And the other thing, Brian, to your question is, don't forget, if you're getting an established manager or administrator somewhere, they need to give their appointing authority probably a month's notice.
Sure.
Probably, but
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any questions? Well, okay, folks, it's time for us to discuss the two candidates. Does anyone have any thoughts?
I think we can let Bob and Buzz leave.
Yeah. Carl, just on behalf of MRI, Buzz and I, thank you. Thank Frank. Frank, you, Frank, thank you for
Thank you very much for consideration. Appreciate it.
We'll wait to hear from you.
Yep. And we're, you know, as Bob said, we're ready to start. Should we be fortunate enough to get this engagement? We can hit the deck running.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah. Good night.
Well, we need to talk about it, guys. But I'm wondering if Lisa should absent herself from this part of the discussion.
Yes, I will do that.
Thank you, Lisa. Okay, folks, thoughts?
Justin. First glance, you know, I talked to a few people in in some other towns, and yet couldn't find a bad reference for either one of them. Both pretty comprehensive. They both did the the community surveys. Really, it seems like it's going to be preference, but I don't I don't know that it can go wrong either way.
Yeah, I know. That's kind of my problem. That's kind of my problem, too. Anyone else have any thoughts? Dan. Dan, unmute yourself, please.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, both of both companies outstanding. They say the only thing I like about the community, the association, the first one, is the fact that the towns that they did were more like Whitman. They were in Massachusetts. They did, well, they didn't list anything out of state that I saw. And I just like the fact that they're more in tune to our type of a community rather than going to the New Hampshire's, the Vermont's and whatever. They were impressive. The fact also that they were under budget is good, but but I mean, both of them were, the resumes were outstanding. Either one, we couldn't go wrong.
Right. Anyone else? Justin?
So just on the, I agree with Dan, but just on the budget, MRI did also come in under budget if we did the assistance package. It would be under $10,000 with all the options included.
What's
What do we, what do we lose exactly if we do the assistance package, Justin? I'm having trouble figuring out.
So I couldn't really figure that one out either. It seemed like they were pitching us on the assistance package.
Yeah, they were, but yeah. That was that was that was unclear to me. And I I felt, you know, after going through the paperwork earlier, I was leaning towards Community Paradigm Associates. But for the exact opposite reason of Dan, I'm actually leaning towards municipal resources because I think even though they've had experience in other states, they were a lot more pointed in their description of our issues and our environment than than I expected them to be. I mean, of course, they just dealt, they were just in Hanson, which taught them a lot, probably. But I thought they I thought they were on the money when they came, when they were talking about our environment and what we're up against. They knew that they knew there was such a thing as a Madden Report. That was just something they dropped. I'm sure that the other guys know that, too. But I got to admit, I was kind of impressed by Municipal Resources. And especially if they can give us enough service in the assistance package to allow us to do the job. But looking for other thoughts before we have a motion.
Oh, go ahead, Brian.
Brian?
Yeah, I kind of agree with all you folks. They both seem very good in their presentations. They both seem like they're right on target. And and the price is, you know, an issue. I think that we're trying to save as much money as we can, even though this is a very important thing that we need to to go through. I kind of think that what Carl said makes sense because as I was hearing the second group, the first group, it seemed like they had a stable of people, the usual suspects almost, that they wanted to go through the mill, I guess, and the the second group didn't seem to have that. And and I kind of like that idea rather than, well, let's say, in the NFL and the NHL, when one coach gets fired, next thing, oh, he pops up in another city. The, you know, they recycle the same ones all over the place. So the second group seemed to me to have then not so much in their presentation. So I did kind of like that.
Randy?
After sitting back watching both of them, I kind of got like a feeling that they were polar opposite type type groups. I don't want to knock MRI, but more of a smaller mom and pop shop. And Paradigm came across to me as, I guess, more of a bigger box type store. Having seen Paradigms, the document, the profile document they did on Kingston, it's unbelievable.
Yeah.
I mean, it just quality work, but I do think that, you know, is it that same talent pool that they just keep drafting out of? I mean, obviously, mentioning the MRI. Obviously, they definitely did some homework, either that or they, you know, were able to call some locals and and pick up the the assessment issue with the school and and the Madden Report. I will say, did they just talk a little longer? Did we seem to give them a little more time and 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 they did a better job of selling themselves, whereas I think Paradigm was ready to answer questions. But but just going off what I see here with the Kingston report, I think I would go with Paradigm.
Thank you, Randy. Frank, you have something to say?
Yeah, when when we looked at this a couple of weeks ago, I included a breakout of the two groups. Management Resources had a fee of $6,500 for what they call recruitment assistance and $1,500 for a background check. And then an advertising program. But then the comprehensive recruitment fee was $1,480. Now, the what appears to be in the regular package is develop a timeline, develop ad copy, review candidates for prior assignments. So they take their prior, the candidates that they applied previously, review those, then screen and review all resumes, essay questions, web search on each candidate, reduce to three to five candidates for interview for the board of selectmen. So there's my estimation is that there's less depth in that work process unless you go for the comprehensive program, which includes the other items that we talked about with an hourly rate. I know both of these people. They're great people.
Which ones are you talking about now, Frank?
I'm talking about both organizations. I know them both. I had a tough time getting references for MRI. I did get four. But I had a tough time because there wasn't any indication of who they dealt with or what positions they recruited for other than its management. The other guy gave us a whole list of people they've interviewed. I, the ones I couldn't reach, I jumped on the BOR site, got the emails, all the names matched up, sent them emails. The last reference I got was actually this morning at around 10 o'clock. And I had, I want to say, 11 or 12 responses, but I don't want to downsize. Each group was well appreciated. But I lean toward Randy's comments. I think you get more out of out of Community Paradigm, but I really didn't want to chime in on this other than tell you what I dug out.
Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Carl, how about if we make a motion, put both of them in the standings, and then we each say which one we choose? And the one that gets the most? The majority?
Sort of like a ranked voting? Is that what we're talking about? Sure. Why don't, someone can make a motion to put both both Municipal Resources Incorporated and Community Paradigm Associates make a motion to put them both in consideration.
Right. I'll make that motion. I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
No, I had a question before we went to the motion.
Yep.
What is our, before we pick a group here, when will our board discuss what we think the process is going to be and who is going to be dealing with whatever group we pick and and are we going to have a couple liaison, you know, liaisons to directly deal with this, whoever we pick? I guess more kind of get a better, you know, idea of what our process is going to be after we pick this group.
I had the same question.
Well, I think that the time to do that would probably be our next meeting. It's not on the agenda for this meeting to do that. So in our next meeting, and if we can keep next meeting's agenda to a controllable number of items, it would help out, it would help an awful lot, Frank. Okay, would someone like to make a motion now?
I think I already made a motion.
Oh, you did. Okay. And was it seconded? No, Randy was just raising his hand. Brian seconded it.
I seconded, Brian.
Okay, so we're going to go around the room and I'd like you to cite which which group you would like to go with. Justin, I'm going to put you first.
Thanks for that one, Carl.
Because you're in the center of my screen, Justin.
Yeah, comparing the two, I do think that MRI, maybe it was because they spoke longer, that they came off as as the more knowledgeable the community. The Kingston thing they sent us, I think there's a Pembroke one in our binder, is pretty comprehensive. So I'm not worried that Paradigm's going to do their homework. I think I'd support Paradigm.
Hey, Paradigm. Okay, Brian?
That's a tough, it's a tough one because I actually like both of them. And while I I think we can't go wrong with either one, I guess I'll go with Municipal Resources.
Okay. Well, this is going to be a race. Dan?
Um, like I said in the beginning, I will go with Paradigm.
Boy, I'm glad I'm glad I'm last. Randy?
Paradigm.
you know, I think I'll go with Paradigm too, but I have to admit, I was really fascinated by the kinds of things that the guys from municipal had to say. Especially their insight into essay writing. But I'll go with Paradigm. I'll go with Paradigm also. So Frank, you'll make the
I will.
You'll make the calls to both of them? Okay. And then in our in our next meeting, we'll have to, we'll we'll figure out how we're going to how we're going to deal with the people that we chose and what kind of a schedule. But it is interesting that it's going to take three months to find a replacement for Frank, or it's only going to take like a week to find a replacement for Rose, for the Supreme Court Justice.
Can I make a suggestion to the board?
Yes.
Since you're going to visit the process in your next meeting, you might want to consider, now that you've made a selection, making yourselves available for the initial interviews to get things moving along as, because that's going to be part of it anyway, and that might jumpstart it.
Sure. They're going to talk, they want to talk to each of us individually anyway.
That's my thought.
You guys open to that?
Yeah, sure.
Justin, Brian, Dan, Randy? Okay.
So what I'll do is I'll provide email and phone numbers for each of you to the company so they can reach out and schedule at your convenience. And they will meet at your convenience.
Okay. Okay, very good. Next item on the agenda is a COVID-19 update, Frank.
Yes. Couple of things here. Let me just bring this up. My notes here. We have issued temporary licenses for alcohol service under COVID where the bars and such are in phase three or phase four, in case maybe. Those licenses expire, I believe, at the end of the month. So the board may want to take a vote tonight to authorize extensions on those licenses until perhaps December 31st to keep it open. And that would be subject to the same conditions that were previously issued following the governor's COVID limitations.
So the thought behind this is to make sure that the governor's limitations are still being carried on until the end of the year.
Or until the state of emergency ends.
Right.
But also to allow us to extend them beyond September 31st.
Beyond the 31st.
Right.
Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Dan.
I'll second it.
A discussion on the motion. Are they seeing none, Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
And I'll say yes. Other COVID-19
Yeah, I was waiting for Chief Grenow.
He's on.
I don't see him. Oh, there he is, to join us.
Is Chief Anlon going to join us also?
Yes. Last Thursday, Chief Grenow and I met with the schools over at the conference room in Whitman Hansen to talk about a COVID system that handles ion distributions. Apparently, the, Tim is a little more knowledgeable than I am, but the purpose of this is it generates ion waves that attach to bacteria and whatever.
Viruses.
Viruses, thank you, including COVID. And these things have been going gangbusters for the last 90 days. In fact, Whitman Hansen spent $160,000 installing these ion generators in all of the buildings in the school. And Ernie seems to be raving about them. Tim received a proposal to do all of the town. buildings, was it 40,000, Tim?
Yeah, just about 40,000, maybe 41, 42, but it was just about the 40,000 number, yeah.
And, and the purpose of this is to enable the vent areas, the ducts to move these ions throughout the building to make it a healthier environment. These are COVID expenses. If we move forward with them, each of the buildings will have devices installed and they'll be monitoring the net effects of it, the air content before we install them and then to ensure that it's actually purifying the environment. They're, they're similar, I guess, to what you see in the marketplace when you buy air purifiers that you run in your house that collect all the material and disinfect the air. But from what I understand, this is the only one that's rated for COVID. So Tim, I'm going to turn it over to you.
So basically, it's a system that mounts in the HVAC systems in each one of the buildings and some, and some of the buildings require three, four, or five of these, these, these odd devices. They emit ions which, which attach themselves to, like Frank said, the virus or, or the bacteria, and it kills it and it cleans the air. So it kills scrap, it kills TB, it kills COVID, it kills all, all kinds of the common known viruses and bacterias out there. So the school district has installed these in all of, in, in all of their buildings. I think it would be a positive move if they installed them in all of the town buildings. If not only for peace of mind, for all of the town employees, knowing that the air that they're now breathing is, is, is more or less like a purified, I'm like type of air, which has knocked off all of the, the, the different type of viruses and bacterias out there like known to mankind, it's killing them. And, and, in, in, in fact, like during the presentation, the manufacturer said that they're also available in residential homes. And the only complaint that they had was they installed one in, in a gentleman's residential home and he could no longer smell his bacon and eggs cooking in the morning because it was that adequate. It, it works that good.
Wow.
So, 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 you know, there's, there's, there's great reviews, like coming out about the school system now. I spoke with the, the administrative office the other day up there and they've noticed the difference in their air quality as like to what they're breathing and, and just your general, no type of odor like in the building. It's, it's just a freshness like throughout the building. So I think for like anything else, it's just going to give our employees townwide that peace of mind, knowing that there's a device that's running that is going to purify that air and, and, and like kill off whatever they may or may not be exposed to, and it should make for a healthier work environment. Plus on the maintenance end of it, because these work so well, it decreases the need to change out all of these air filters all the time, which we do on a frequent basis in all the systems in town.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions? And you're looking for, you're looking for what, Frank? You're looking for an authorization to purchase?
As I said to Tim, I'm not going to order something that hasn't been approved by the Board of Selectmen.
Justin?
I just had a question on what, why go with something like, like an ionization unit as opposed to like a MRF-13 filter, which you're selling out all over the country for filtering out virus particles?
So the problem with the filters is they require constant changing. These are 20-year life expectancy. They kill everything out there pretty much and they decrease your need to change out these filters. And when you talk about the 20-muor filter, and that's what it's called, right, Justin, a 20 muor?
MRF-13 is the, the one I've heard, but yeah.
So I'm told by Ernie at the school district and several like others is that when you get in to the muor 13s and the muor 20 filters, they're so thick of the filter, the systems can't maintain those and people are burning out motors and everything else because those filters are so heavy duty. They might be filtering that air, but you're burning out motors and everything else in HVAC systems.
Anyone else have a question?
This is covered by the, the COVID fund?
Yes.
Yes, if, if you read the federal guidelines on COVID, multi-cations and modifications to HVAC systems is covered.
Excellent.
Would someone like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to purchase these. Yeah, it's a no brainer.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion? Any further discussion? Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
I'm going to abstain on this one.
Okay, Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes to. Frank, is she still on COVID?
Yes. The challenges that we've been facing recently have been compounded by a couple of events that have occurred. One over the weekend, which is why I've asked the chiefs to be here. It has been a difficult time for every business that's operating today under COVID. Most, everybody is working with us, although they're very frustrated about it. I compliment Al from the VFW on his ingenuity in trying to come up with different things that can be done. But at the same time, the Board of Health is really the deciding factor on what can and can't be done under COVID. And I'm going to ask the board to, to to validate the statement I'm going to make that we can't keep going back and forth on things. When a decision is made by the Board of Health, it's not helpful to have people who are looking to use the space harangue the Board of Health and the Selectmen's Office to gain permission to do it. We're licensing these facilities so that they know what they can operate in. And they have to be the ones to say, hey, we can do it or we can't. If there's a question, then by all means, they come to the town to get an answer. But once that answer is given, it has to be accepted. We can't keep having people make individual appeals. Examples include a meat raffle. The health agent said, no, no meat raffles. Now we have the people coming to us saying, well, why can't we have a meat raffle? That's a decision that has to be conveyed at the point of sale, wherever the person's going. So I'm going to ask that the DP, the VFW who's been invited to this meeting understand that it's not helping them or us when they keep telling people, well, you have to go to the town. You've already come to us, we've made a decision, you got to live with it. There was an event that occurred this weekend and, and I know it prompted an email, let the email by our police chief because of some of the issues it created in terms of having motorcycle gatherings. There were best estimate 600 bikes in the parking lot at the VFW. No way that's social distanced. The outdoor gathering is 50 people or a maximum of eight per thousand square feet. So that stuff can't continue. And I think if maybe they hear it from the board rather than from me or Tim Grenow or, or Alexis, they, they might get a better understanding that it's the direction we have to go in.
Okay, thoughts? And Tim is here for a purpose, Frank? Does he have anything you'd like to say?
Yes, he'd like to talk about us establishing some type of parameters for future events that involve a need to have police presence and traffic control.
Okay, Chief, you want to chime in?
There we go. Everyone here?
This is actually, yeah, just a second, Chief, I'm sorry. This is not under update COVID-19, is it, Frank? The chief's?
Well, it is because of the gatherings and, and we need to control them.
But you got, you got new, new business.
All right. Because I have something on the COVID column.
Oh, okay, okay. So why don't we, why don't we put off the chief's discussions to when we get to new business and talk about the meat raffle? All right, and let's finish with the COVID discussion. Randy?
Well, again, it, we've all been dealing with challenges with COVID, but I think we're all trying our best to, to try and get as much normal business done as we can. And you know, a bit ago, we, we voted that we would be doing a, a school audit. And that was put off due to COVID and then the budget cycle. Now we've, I think we, we've kind of hit a lull where we're in a good management position with COVID. And giving our last meeting, I think we should have some discussion on that as far as are we going to push forward with that through COVID or is that going to fall, fall to the back burner?
Randy, yes, we are. I spoke with John Stanbrook last week. I, he has reached out to the bidder who has agreed to hold to the bid that he presented to us last spring or last winter. And they're coordinating time for when this is going to start. And it hopefully should be within the next few weeks.
Okay, is that, is that it for COVID then?
Kyle, are we going to continue our conversation on when employees go to out of state on hotspots that we talked about? Are we going to make a decision in open meeting?
I think we, we were going to talk about that at our next meeting because it wasn't?
It's a policy issue that has to be on the agenda, Dan.
Okay, all right.
I mean, you could say it was on the agenda because of update COVID-19, but that's really, that's really not describing what we're going to be talking about.
Okay.
Okay. Budget review, is there anything you want to say on that, Frank?
Budget request went out over the weekend and they're due on October 15th. Ken Lidle, our town accountant, is going to be handling the receipt and entry of the budget items and will be very involved in assisting the board in developing a budget for FY '22.
Okay. Anyone have any questions? Okay, new business, Al Rennie, manager, Whitman VFW, request to hold a meat raffle. Read a, read a note that Abington's doing meat raffles, why can't we do meat raffles? And the Board of Health has said no. Is the reason for that, Frank? Why was the Board of Health?
Their concerns about crowds and social distancing.
Okay.
It all comes down to.
This is Al. Can I say something?
Yes.
Yeah. We're following the guidelines. It's an entertainment piece that we're giving for dining, outside and inside dining. I'm allotted 94, 99 seats, okay, for inside and outside dining. Less the number of people that are participating as far as, you know, serving food and so forth like that, okay? It is not a gathering, inside and outside gathering, according to the state, is not a gathering. You've been a lot of X amount of people for dining, okay? And that's what we abide by. All it's going to be is going to have another six people, okay, walking around with masks on, selling tickets, okay, getting money and one person walking around with the tray of food showing what they're, what they're trying to raffle off, okay? And they're all sitting, they're all sitting down, they need to dine, okay? They can't have any alcohol unless they do eat, all right? Unless they're just drinking soda and water. So we're following the state guidelines for inside and outside dining, okay? And all it is, is that, that's what we requested. Originally, that's, again, that's what we did. The Board of Health said, no, we, we don't agree with you, that it should not happen, okay? And it was fine, I did that. But coming into work last week, I saw that Abington was allowing meat raffles. So I sent an email to the Board of Health and asked them, are we still on no for meat raffles or are we changing it? Okay, that was the question. So what I plan on doing is no difference when I had requested before. So really was just, are we still under the hold or can we do it?
How do you get 99 people in?
Maybe it was 99, maybe it was 94. There's 24 people outside and there's 75 people inside for inside and outside dining. That is what I was allowed for inside and outside dining.
Where, I'm trying to understand how your facility could support that many people inside dining?
Inside, outside.
And, and meeting the the requirements for social distancing.
Well, you came in, you gave me 75 within the pavilion, okay? You measured it off and it was 75 people inside the pavilion. And then before that, I was allotted 24 people outside using the socializing distances outside.
So this would be in the pavilion?
That's correct. Because that's the only thing that's open right now. My main building is not open.
Frank, do you know, do you know why the Board of Health turned it down?
Again, it's, it's the COVID-19, you know, the distancing and so forth like that. They thought it would, you know, get more people than they, than I could handle.
I, I seem to recall 50 as a number.
50 what?
In the, in the pavilion, but I'll, I'll check with Barbara.
I did submit a, a sketch of everything, all the tables and so forth to the Board of Health and to the town that showed the outside and the inside dining.
Okay, I'm not aware of that. Let me follow up with the Board of Health and see where we are on this.
Sure.
The thing that we're really concerned about, and I use that we very casually, the town has a vested interest in not seeing COVID blow up here.
Well, I agree.
Wherever they're getting crowds, wherever they're getting a lot of people moving around and doing things, they're getting infections. I, I would even argue that having people walk around handing, selling tickets to people and taking their money is a high-risk operation.
Oh, I don't disagree with you. Money is one of the dirtiest things around.
Then why would you want to do it?
Gloves.
Why? We're a business and everybody's doing, I don't take credit cards, so I can't do that, okay? We're following the guidelines as far as wearing masks, serving food and so forth. We're cleaning the tables after everybody leaves and so forth. We're handing out, you know, packets of condiments and so forth like that. So I mean, we're following what we're supposed to follow, okay? And again, when I do talk with you or the Board of Health, all right, or the, the town asking for these particular items, can we do this or can we do that? All right. I do it in the sense saying, I can control. I do it in the sense saying, I can control what I have and I'm just trying to extend what I have, not to increase my volume of people coming in as far as if I have 94 seedings and I have five people working, then I have 89 people that we can dine in and out, okay? I'm not asking to have 150.
And, and we're not tone deaf, Al. We understand that we want to see businesses.
Oh, absolutely. And you guys are trying to do the best that you can, all right? My thing is, is that where is the level playing field between the two towns?
I don't care what Abington does, Al.
And I don't either. And I don't care either. That's the reason I, I went to the board and I said, are we still on hold or can we do it? That's all it was.
I know Randy, Randy's been trying to get a word in while you guys were going back and forth.
As much as I definitely appreciate every business, you know, I feel for every business right now. The thing is, between Abington and Whitman, it's two different fields. And we have to make decisions that are right for this town. And, and I think, you know, backing our Board of Health and sticking by the decisions that the, the Board of Health, the fire chief, the police chief, their recommendations. They're the ones dealing with this on a daily basis. And, and we really have to put a lot of stock in what they're saying. As far as the meat raffle, it sounds like it may be a trivial thing, but think about what's being done. We're trying to social distance. What now are you doing when you have a one or two or three people that are going from table to table to table? You're basically cross-spreading contamination at that point. That you take one person, you could have 90 people separated and now one person cross-contaminates that restaurant. I think that's what the danger, the danger is there.
Well, that's, excuse me, Randy, that's the same thing and I agree with you, okay? The cross-contamination, but you got to remember too, what happens when you have three waitresses going out there serving food? You're doing the same thing, all right? So, and I, and I abide by what the town says and what the Board of Health says, okay? If they say no meat raffles, no meat raffles, okay? If they say no memorial services, then I don't have memorial services. My thing was, is I saw it and I said, well, are things changing, all right? And I do, and I say to everybody, I don't care what happens in Halifax. I don't care what happens in Abington, Rockland. I care about Abington, Whitman and the VFW. I don't care what John Snow does down, down the street to his restaurant. I'm concerned with the VFW.
Okay, I would like to have, I would like to see the board, basically back what Randy said about backing up the Board of Health, which has a tough job. I want to make sure that the, the board is behind them when they make these decisions. Frank, however, said that he and the, and the Board of Health would meet again with Al to go over his plans for a meat raffle. I hear everything Randy says about a meat raffle. I'm super sensitive to this COVID-19 thing. However, how is the board, if the board will reinforce its support of our Board of Health and of our reopening committee that has Chief Grenow, Chief Hanlon on it? How does the board feel about Frank and the Board of Health revisiting the issue of the meat raffle with, with Al?
Point of order is that, Carl, I will defer whatever decision Board of Health makes. I mean, you know, we, we refer to the reopening group as a committee. We're really not. We don't vote. We are advisors to the Board of Health and the Board of Health makes the ultimate determination.
So, so your offer to talk to Al with the Board of Health wasn't a real offer?
No, it was to open the dialogue and see if we can find out whether.
Okay.
They're different.
Okay, to see.
No, it's ultimately going to be whatever the health agent or chair of the Board of Health decides.
Right.
This is Al, and I agree with Frank. I mean, the Board of Health rules it. I mean, whatever they decide, we have to abide by it.
Okay, yes, Dan.
Okay, thank you, Carl. My wife and I just last weekend went to dinner at the Barrett House in Bridgewater. They have inside dining, they have outside dining, they have waitresses and people cleaning tables inside and out. I understand where Randy's going. But I think the Board of Health might want to open their eyes and look at what's going on in Whitman with inside and outside dining. We have restaurants in town and how are they dealing with it? And if in fact, they're maintaining the social distancing, cleaning the tables, carrying a tray of meat around, the meat's wrapped. I mean, it's not, you know, what's the difference of carrying a dish of food that isn't wrapped? So I think the, I agree, whatever the Board of Health decides, we should go with it and the businesses, but I think they need to open their eyes and see what's going on in restaurants in town and say, don't say okay to them, but not to somebody else. That's my theory.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't question the Board of Health.
No.
Mr. Chairman.
I don't. I think that they, they know what's going on in town.
I think Tim has.
And they take this seriously.
I'm not saying they don't, but I think I, they have to look, relook at things maybe. It's not six months ago.
Mr. Chairman.
Now, Dan, that remark, I'm sorry. It's not six months ago, no, no. We're about to hit into late fall and early winter. And if you think things are going to get better magically, then you're dreaming.
Well, I'm hoping so.
And I think we have, what we have to do is we have to go to the people who are, who are working and are in charge of it. And that's the Board of Health. That's the way I feel anyway. But I, but I do, I would, I would encourage Frank and the Board of Health to talk to Al about more specifically what his plans are for the, for the meat raffle and see if they understand each other.
Chief Grenow, Carl.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
I can't say chief, yes, yes, chief.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to like briefly, on my comment, because there is a huge difference as, as to the different procedures and what is going on out there. If you go out to dinner in any one of the restaurants in Whitman, the, the waitresses currently have to change their gloves in between every single serving that they're doing. So they're changing their gloves, their masks are on and, and, and they're very cognizant of what they're doing. When you're holding a meat raffle, you have the same person, they're not changing their gloves. They take $5 from this person and $5 from that person and $10. Like from this person, it's all the same. It's all the same money. And then they have to give change and the change is coming out. I want $10 like worth of tickets. Well, here's a 20. So here's a 10 back. So now that money is contaminated and it's going back and forth. It's totally different. The Board of Health in Whitman has a very good handle on what's going on. They're following the governor's guidelines. Everything is up to par and they are doing their job and they're doing it well. And I, I, I think by your board's backing of them doing their job and, 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 and keeping this town safe would go a long way.
I agree, but what if, what if the VFW followed the same rules? Or anybody else? That's the question. It's on them to follow the rules. If they don't follow the rules and go shortcuts, I agree, no, they don't have it.
This is Al, Tim, just wanted to let you know, I disagree with you when you say that they're changing, that waitresses at every restaurant in Whitman and wherever are changing gloves, they're not wearing gloves. Half of the people that serve food are not wearing gloves.
I, I, I don't know, Al. I've been to two restaurants in town and the waitresses are wearing gloves as they're serving food.
I've been to, been to three restaurants. I mean, I've been to two and two other towns and one here and they're not wearing gloves. And I'm not saying you're not, you should wear gloves, all right? I'm, I'm for what the, again, whatever the Board of Health decides to do, and I'm not understanding, they're trying to do the best thing that they can.
Absolutely.
Whatever they come up with, okay? I don't want anybody here to catch anything. I don't want it to spread any further than it has gone, okay? And whatever the Board of Health says, they're doing the best thing that they should have do for Whitman and I agree with them.
Glad, that's, that's good to hear. I would like to have a motion from, from somebody.
Mr. Chairman.
That affirms its support in our Board of Health and the job that they're doing.
Okay, I will make that motion, Carl. Dan.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, Brian. And could I speak to this a minute, please? I, I'm going to choose to take the positive approach here that I understand that the meat raffles are high-risk. But I, I think we should be thankful that we are able to open restaurants as they are now and facilities now with everyone struggling to survive freely and literally with this COVID. The fact that the VFW and McWiggins and Ted's place can actually have people eat and get out there and get some of these businesses, some business, that we should be thankful that we're able to be in that level. And the fact that if we can't do a meat raffle, okay, maybe we can't and we should back our Board of Health. But we should be positive and thankful that our restaurants are open at all and be positive that maybe by the holidays, maybe things will change and they'll be able to do things. That's, you know, wishful thinking maybe, but I'm just thankful that there are businesses that are open and, and I'm going to back the, the Board of Health.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, anyone else want to speak on the motion? It's just a motion of the board's support for the work that the Board of Health is doing and the decisions that they're making. Okay, hearing none, I'll go for a vote, Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. And the, we had the request to hold a meat raffle. I think that since the Board of Health has said no, we just, we just took care of that. But I, I think that Frank offered to go with the, with the Board of Health, go over this request again with VFW, correct Frank?
Yes.
So we, we will, we will table then our action under a question of the meat raffle until we get that report. Next item is to act on the request of Paula Kelly to hold a poker run at the VFW to benefit the Magical Moon Foundation.
I believe now we're playing Tim's song.
Is this, is this what Tim has looked, is this what? Okay, Tim.
This is motorcycles, many, many of them.
Yeah. My moment to shine, I guess, thank you. So, VFW has held a couple of poker run, I believe, two weekends ago. And then this past Sunday was the America Backs the Blue Run, which was touted, I guess, more as a political statement than a charitable run, it turns out. So our problem is kind of twofold in that the gatherings that occur or did occur this past Sunday were way over the limits. So you have to base your, I guess, balance between your right to assemble against any COVID-related issues such as not wearing masks, not social distancing and having a gathering over a certain number of people. So that's, that's the fine line that we kind of find ourselves kind of scratching our heads over as to what to do in any particular case, so. And then from a public safety perspective, just getting them out into the street through the intersection safely as far as motorcycle runs go, that's going to put a burden on our budget. Not every single time, but certainly over the long run, if this continues. What we like to try to do is provide that coverage at no cost to the charity or the VFW where they might be passing that, that cost on. We'd rather have all those monies that we could have go to the charity, go to the charity. So that's where we find ourselves in kind of which way do we go with any particular motorcycle ride or event. So, but that said, our thought is to try and put in place some sort of permitting process where we know how many people are going to attend, what the date is well in advance so we can at least prepare for it. Some of these are last minute if we get notified at all. And then move forward, whether the, the process can go forward or, or we decide based on everything, all the considerations with the number of people they expect and the gathering as far as a yes or no, similar probably to what the Board of Health is kind of struggling with now. One of the things with this COVID thing is who's struggling? The charities are struggling because they can't really hold very many, if any, of these events. So all of these charitable events have been canceled, you know, since the springtime. So, so that's, that's where we stand now. So another situation is, is coming up with this. I understand it's charitable, but at the same time, we should be following the guidelines and so should these charitable organizations if they can. So, so that's where we stand.
This is Al. May I speak?
Yes.
And I agree with the chief that, you know, there, there was a lot of people there. I, more than I really ever expected, but I had no control over that because it was a political rally, okay? So how can you ask, you know, you can only limit a political rally to so many people? I don't think that that's ever going to happen, okay? I know that they were walking around with their mask off, but that's not, it's on my property, but I can't go out there and tell 1,000 people, 1,500 people, put your mask on, okay? But what I did do is that if they entered my building pavilion to use the restrooms, I made sure they had their mask on, okay, from inside, protecting, again, protecting my people inside the pavilion and the VFW itself, okay? But the other thing is, is the other thing that's coming up is the poker run for the magical, that charitable thing. It's not the same thing as you see now, all right? It's a two-hour window that are coming in and you may have five or six people coming in on a motorcycle, they grab their ticket for wherever they're going to go and then they leave. So it's not accumulating motorcycles and motorcycles, not 50, 60 motorcycles coming in at one time. It could be two, it could be five, but it's not like what you saw this weekend. And it's the exact same thing that happened two weeks ago when Mike Gardner had his motorcycle poker run. They come in, they get their tickets and then they leave. They're not even coming back.
Al, where are they going when they come in?
Don't know.
No. They pull up to your lot, what do they do?
They come up.
Do they come inside?
No, no, they stay with their motorcycles. The organizer gives them their ticket or whatever they have and they're going to another destination. At that destination, okay, they receive a card, okay? And they make a poker hand out of it. So there's five different areas that they're going to stop. Okay? And, you know, used to be, they used to come in and have a drink. Now they're just stopping there, getting their card and they're on their way to their next destination. We're not even open to them for the pavilion or for anything. No food, no drink, no nothing.
But the one thing, Al, that I would say in response to your comment is you do have control because it's your property.
I have, right.
Permission.
And if I see that I have people gathering there, they're more than what should be, all right? I do take steps to get them out of there, okay? What happened this past week with that rally, there was no way that you know how many people are going to be there, all right? But I can control the organizers that do these poker runs and say, look, you need to move these people out now. So it is, you know, that 50 people that as far as the gathering goes, I do not accept, okay?
I'm sorry, Al, I'm trying, I'm trying to follow what you were saying about that. When you say you do not accept it, what does that mean?
Well, in other words, if there, if there's six or seven motorcycles, that's fine. But if 30. But if thirty motorcycles come in with two people on each one, they have to stop, they gotta get out there, they do not stay, leave their motorcycles, they're in, they're out within five, ten minutes.
Okay, has the Board of Health, has, has the Board of Health made any, uh, recommendation on this, Frank, do you know?
I don't know.
This event?
I don't think it has. Okay. I know that they came to me and I told them, you know, we can't do it. Okay. Uh, we, we don't, we, we don't have any events scheduled as a VFW. I know it's my property, so therefore I'm hosting it. Okay? But other than that, you know, we've canceled all events whatsoever at the VFW.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
The, the, the Board of Health has, has stated no motorcycle runs, period.
Okay, and the reason behind it?
Because of the gatherings and, you know, because of, of, of the potential for, you know, fifty, sixty, seventy, or a hundred, like motorcycles at a time or, or people like coming in. So the Board of Health has taken a strong line of no motorcycle runs.
Okay, thank you. Anyone have any thoughts? Mr. Justin?
Just, um, I'm not sure who'll be able to answer this. Anyone's knowledge, what is the Board of Health's current mask order? I know it's, it's indoor. Does it go anything beyond the governor's must-wear mask outside when not able to social distance?
No, the Board of Health sticks with what the governor requires.
Okay.
We have before us a request to hold a poker run at the VFW.
Well, again, it's, it's, it's not a gathering. I just want you to be aware of that. Okay. It is a, you know, three, maybe five motorcycles coming in at one time. All right, friends riding together, getting their tickets and leaving.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to look here in our notes, but I have some blurred pages for what the, how the Board of, I know the chief just said the Board of Health ruled against it, but I, I don't see anything in writing here that says it did. Is it, is it in here, Frank?
I, I don't, I don't know. I, I'm not aware of what the Board of Health has done.
Frank, I don't think Elaine did anything on this. Okay, because it just came up three days ago, I believe.
Okay. Al, I believe that Alexis had a conversation with you at least a month, if not two months ago, and, and, and had a second call, a second call conversation with you when the Chesna Bike Run was posted all over the internet. And she specifically said, we've told you once, we've already told you no to motorcycle runs. Absolutely not.
I agree with you. Okay.
This is no different, Al.
Yes, there is. Yes, there is. Now let me say one thing now. Okay? That Michael Chesna, okay, was posted incorrectly. That was supposed to be back, America Backs the Blue. When the, when the organizer posted it, he posted as the first annual Michael Chesna run. Okay?
And then he posted it for something else.
And then he went back in. And then I told him, you can't do that. You need to go back in there and change that event. All right? It wasn't, it, it was on my event calendar, but we did not post it. He went back in and he reposted it as America Backs the Blue Roland Rally. And that's what you saw this past Sunday.
That's right.
Again, it was a protest. He thought that he was going to do a Michael Chesna run for the family. And I said, you can't do it. We're not having motorcycle runs. All right? I said, we can't do it.
So he, so he decided instead to do a political protest?
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, there's a lot of, there's a lot of issues with what went on with what it was called and how it was named. And Chief Hanlon might be able to comment better, but I don't think it's, it needs to be hashed out of on camera.
Right, right, right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What I would say is we need to follow, uh, what we said previously that, uh, we're gonna support the, the Board of Health, we're gonna support the police chief, we're gonna support the fire chief. I, I think one thing that we've, we've done very well, which we should continue to do with, is follow CDC and state guidelines, the governor's mandate, and not very, very far off from those. We've done that to this point and I think our town has been fairly successful. I had no idea what the Magical Moon was, but it seems like an unbelievable place. It does a lot of fantastic work for kids and kids that, that definitely need some help. But we have a job to do and that's follow guidelines and support our town officials. I would say whatever the Board of Health says, I would be fine with, as long as we're following state mandates, governor's orders and CDC guidelines.
It seems then if the Board of Health has not ruled on this yet because they only got the request three days ago, that we'll be acting prematurely to write on our request.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd suggest we table this and direct it to the Board of Health for action.
Okay, is there a motion to do that? Because that makes sense to me.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I have one question, Carl. What is the date of this poker run?
It hasn't been established yet. They're waiting to see if they can actually do it.
Okay, all right. Very good. Thank you.
Okay, so tabling it makes even more sense. Okay, anybody have any other thoughts? Okay, we'll vote on the motion to table. Dan?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And, and I'll vote yes as well. Next item on the agenda is to vote to pre- approve the fee agreement for special counsel for environmental site work. Frank?
Yes.
Thank, and thank you chiefs for chiming in on this last issue.
Thank you.
This is, uh, this is in connection with the work that Lisa is seeking to do with the Bedford Street property and the, uh, the
Legal show.
Legal property. The funds for legal are not part of the grant. So if we do seek legal counsel for environment, that's something that we pay. The, previously, we had another firm handling our environmental law. And then we switched to Myers and Harrington. I wanna say ten, maybe ten years ago, certainly close to that long. And environmental law is a specialty that you, you really need to be up on. The fees that these folks charge are reasonable. When I, Lee Gilligan was the attorney who represented us for environment when I came on board. And when I saw her, now this is nineteen years ago, when I saw her six hundred dollar an hour bills, I found ways to, to get, get through without doing that. But this is something that will need assistance to go into court to get permission to enter the properties because of environmental issues. So that would require special counsel. And this is the, uh, request that Lisa was making tonight.
Is there a motion?
Oh my God, so moved, Dan.
Is there a second? Where'd that oh my God come from? Okay, discussion.
Now I'm looking at the fees. I'm looking at the two hundred and seventy-five dollars an hour. Right? Frank, I have a question. How much is this gonna be on the town?
I would guess probably four to five thousand in the course of a year.
Okay. What is this? A hundred dollars an hour for travel rate. What does that mean? If it takes them an hour to get from home to here, it's a hundred bucks?
I guess so, if, if we bring them in.
It'd be cheaper to give them, put them up in a hotel someplace around here.
I'd take a Zoom call, actually.
Not to do it.
And most of the, most of the work is done via Zoom and email. So there really won't be any reason for them to travel. I mean, and they've worked with us on the regal property, so they're very familiar with it. So I, I would be very surprised if we had to pay any money for travel, you know, with the technology we have today.
And, and probably once we figure it out and if we sell any of it, we can recoup it anyway.
Well, we're not gonna sell it. This is
Well.
We don't own it.
Yet.
We will never own it. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We can recoup it. I know where you stand, Randy, on it.
Here we go.
I want, I want to hear what Randy has to say, Dan.
This, this is what I brought up, um, when this first came up. And when we started talking about grants, we are now talking about taking Whitman taxpayer money and do investigative work on a tremendously contaminated site that now will cost our taxpayers. So it's moved now within two weeks beyond a grant to do a study to now using our taxpayer money. We have no idea what the liability is there if you find an imminent hazard. So when we go in there, find an imminent hazard, what is our town's liability? Still have not been shown what that is. Excuse me, Lisa, let me continue. Also, there is an agent to this property. We know that. I, this board has yet to see any documents that says they have relinquished or they do not want to assume control of this property more. We have not seen one document saying that. We've been told that, but there's nothing that said that we can look at and say they have given, that they don't care about this property, but we know there's an agent. I'm sorry, i- if you go on the DEP sites when this came up a few years ago, it's chlorinated solvents and in nineteen ninety, the cost to clean it up was over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Put that in today's numbers, you're talking seven or eight hundred thousand dollars. It's only valued at a million. You will be lucky to get that. It's already, this is the first step of what it's gonna cost the taxpayers. Never mind time from the Assistant Town Administrator, whoever else puts work into it. We don't own it. We never will. This is a waste of resources. This is a waste of Whitman tax dollars.
Okay, Randy, and my comment to that is then what do we do with it? Sit on it for a thousand years?
We don't own it, Dan. I- if you research this piece of property, it is contaminated with the worst of the worst. Okay, we, we're talking chlorinated solvents. Hold on one second and I'll tell you what's in there.
You're gonna have people move out of that neighborhood.
Well, it's already being monitored, monitored by the DEP. And, and, and under, uh, twenty-one E, if there's an imminent hazard, the state will come in.
All right, there you go.
They, they're already monitoring it with wells down there off of, uh, sorry, the street just escaped me.
I know it.
Terry Lane and Robin Road. Right. They're out there. We're only gonna go into, to the building, you know, the, the BFI area. More than likely that's under the building. So you're gonna go out there and drill and then you gotta find it in the building.
And if we do, you don't think the state will come in and clean it up?
This is not something that I have seen the proper attention put into, even if we owned it. But we don't own this property. It's one tax cycle late. The regal property hasn't been paid since nineteen eighty-eight. This is a waste of time. It's a waste of resources and now will become a waste of tax dollars.
Hey, does anyone have an answer for Randy?
By me?
Uh, Lisa, Lisa and then Justin.
Okay, um, Randy, the purpose of the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund with the state of Massachusetts is to take exactly these type of properties and assist municipalities in bringing them back to the tax rolls. Every single town that has redeveloped a brownfield property went through this exact same process with the exact same circumstances. All of these properties were polluted. They were not owned by the town. They were old properties that were abandoned and were basically becoming eyesores within the community. Not one of the communities that has gotten a grant to perform a site assessment or remediation has had the community come against, has had the state or faced any ramifications or consequences by moving to do a site assessment. Not one community. However, the Brownfield Redevelopment Fund since nineteen ninety-nine has put eighty-one point nine million dollars aside to assist communities with redeveloping brownfield funds. Now you say we haven't received any documentation. We do have an email from our town council who, who does state that the heirs have refused to take any type of ownership with this property. So we do have an email from our town council. But we're not even going down that road. And we're not using any taxpayer money other than what we're gonna have to pay with legal fees. The point is, I mean, I filed two applications for site assessments in the realm of one hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars so that we can find out what the level of contamination is and then develop a strategy. We, there's protections by law under Mass General Law twenty-one E that protects us from any liability. We do not own the property. We did not own it. We did not operate it and we didn't cause any of the contamination. So there is no liability from the state, the federal government, or any other person against the town. We're doing nothing but performing a site assessment. Now I agree you say we don't own it and there is no plans or talk about owning it. However, with all of the communities, and I can name many of them, there is a partnership between the community and a developer or an investor to work together to bring these back to the tax rolls. Rather than seeing a, a building that is structurally sound, sitting there rotting away. Now, yes, the DEP has been in here, but they have not done a thing since twenty seventeen. That's three years that they haven't done a thing. So they can't be that worried about it if they haven't looked at it in three years. And we have an excellent licensed professional who are gonna help us with this process. And we will find out exactly what's going on with a grant with very minimal taxpayer dollars. But in the future, we could see lots of taxpayer, tax dollars coming back to the town when the property is redeveloped and, and contributing to the economy here in Whitman.
All right. Thank you, Lisa. Justin, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I was just gonna say that the, um, you know, this motion is to set a fee schedule for, for environmental council. It's not specific to one property or another, although clearly it's, it's related to the, the ongoing research into brownfield redevelopments. Uh, but if, if what Randy says about the, it being a million dollar property is right, that's like fifteen thousand a year in property tax that we could be seeing if we move forward with something.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
If I can.
Randy?
The D, the DEP comes out, if there's an imminent hazard, our LSP will have to notify the town or rebutters. This property, one, is not rotting away. It's one tax cycle behind. All right. And as for this document, I did not see that document in twenty seventeen when I asked for it. And I still haven't seen it today. Two weeks ago, we were getting a grant that this was not gonna cost us anything. Two weeks later, it's now costing four to five thousand. We haven't even knocked on the front door yet. I don't know, I, my motion would be to table this this evening and give everybody on this board a chance to go to the Mass DEP site and see for themselves what exactly is out there. This is not a property we wanna get into.
Paul, if I may respond?
Lisa.
Mary Beth Carter is preparing tax title, um, taking for this property, um, effective next month. So they have, they are more than one quarter behind. And again, uh, with the DEP, there is a lot of information, but it stops at twenty seventeen. And the majority of it focuses on the impact to the residents on Terry Road and Robin Road. And the ground pollution motive, moving towards that way. That's the DEP focus.
I disagree with that.
We will see that information.
As it goes back all the way to nineteen eighty-six, there's over fourteen hundred documents on it.
Like I said, but it starts at twenty seventeen.
When I argued it three years ago, Lisa, my, and I'm pretty, uh, you, you wanna go to the regal property? Why aren't you going there?
We are.
That's what I asked. That is a property that hasn't, has not been on the tax roll since nineteen That's what I asked. That is a property that hasn't, has not been on the tax roll since 1988.
Right.
So why isn't the focus there where you know it's only a heavy metal cleanup and not PCB, sorry, PCBs and vinyl chloride and chlorinated solvents and dangerous stuff that if there is a misstep in this will cost this town hundreds of thousands of dollars. What?
Randy, it's not going to cost us anything. And I think,
It already is.
what you're pointing out is that if,
Last week, it wasn't going to cost us.
if you don't do something about it and find out, you mean, we're trying to assess, we are trying to assess only what's going on at Bedford. But Regal is the priority. Both properties are going to be worked on at the same time, and we can apply for two grants at the same time, so why not?
So this,
Okay, we actually, we have a dilemma here. We have a motion on the floor that's being discussed. And Randy also indicated that he wanted to table the motion, which is not debatable. Is there a second to Randy's motion to table?
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll just go to the, we'll go to the vote then. Justin, do you want to table it?
No.
Brian?
I think it'd be good for us to get some more information.
Okay, so that's a yes.
Yeah.
Okay, Dan?
No.
Randy? Okay, so it's two to two, and it's up to me. I'm going to vote to, I'll vote to table it until the following meeting, and will give us a chance to look at this. I liked Lisa's arguments about it. I want to look into a little more so I can understand Randy's a little bit, a little bit deeper. But we'll have to put, this will be something on the next agenda, Frank.
This includes the Regal property also?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a couple of weeks to talk about it, and then we'll discuss it formally at the next meeting. Back on the request of the town clerk to issue a warrant for unlicensed dogs to the animal control officer, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Randy? I'm looking for a vote.
Oh, yes.
Okay, Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
I'll vote, I almost abstained, but I'll vote yes.
We want to find out if Randy has an unregistered dog.
Is that the trash fee for fiscal year '21, Frank?
Yes, Bruce Martin has requested that we hold the fee at 285. You may or may not have seen a blurb he put on Facebook, which was brought to my attention by my son, that apparently we are violating the level of unacceptable materials that are permitted in our waste recycling program. And because of that, we're going to be receiving surcharges on the tonnage that goes into recycling. I raised that question. He doesn't feel that it's going to be so much that it would wildly throw off this number, and they're going to ask for a rescanning in a couple of weeks. So I'm inclined to support his recommendation at 285.
Question?
Yeah, yes, Dan. Someone make a, someone make a motion, please.
I'll make that motion. I'll make the motion to keep it at 285.
All right, Brian, a second. Okay, okay, Dan?
Question is, is there still a senior discount?
Nothing is changing in the program.
Okay. Also, I know that each, each truck has a camera on them so that when they dump a trash in, they can actually look at the camera. If they notice anything, they can make note of the address. And then maybe send them a letter saying that, you know, send these people letters or something.
I guess it all depends on whether it's visible.
Broke, right.
And it all depends on whether the guy you're paying $20 an hour to drive a garbage truck is going to take it that seriously.
Is there any information, Frank, on the kind of materials that's been?
Yes, there was a photo. There were hoses. The biggest problem is unacceptable recycling products. The fact that it has a number on it doesn't mean we can recycle it. So what has to happen is the DPW has to prepare another outline showing exactly what can be put in recycling. Anything that has food waste in it, if it's not rinsed, it's unacceptable recycling. Plastics, certain types are unacceptable. Bags are unacceptable. I was even told that I, when I recycle newspaper and paper, I put it in a paper bag. I'm told now I have to shake out the paper bag in the bin. I can't just throw the paper bag in the bin. It never occurred to me it was that big an issue. So it's an education process for the residents of Whitman.
So it sounds like the DPW has to do a kind of an educational program.
I agree.
Okay. Okay, there's been a motion made to set the trash fee, to hold the trash fee at 285, including the senior discount. Justin, vote yes or no?
Actually, just a quick question before. We're part of the South Shore Recycling Co-op. Is, do they have educational material we can just distribute rather than asking the DPW to do it?
A lot of different towns are different.
They have some, but it's different for each contract. So we're going to have to work with the DPW to come up with an education piece.
Good question, Justin. Do you have a vote?
Yes.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Potential lease of land for Monopole Tower?
Yeah, we have somebody who wants to put a tower up behind the, or may want to put a tower up behind the Commercial Street Pumping Station. I went over some things with Bob Curran yesterday, and I'm going to ask to table this because I need more information before I bring it forward to the board.
Okay, we'll take it up at the next meeting, but let's not make that agenda too heavy, Frank. But it's starting to get heavy already.
I may not be bringing you back based on what I saw.
Do you want to announce a vacancy Department of Public Works Commissioners?
Yes, I accidentally did that earlier, but we have a resignation at the DPW, and that is an elected position that will require appointment. And I have to check chapter, the Act of 49, but I believe it's for the duration of the appointment.
Yes.
It's not a one year. It's until that terms up. And we need people who are interested in serving in those capacities. We do have one volunteer for this. I received the information last week, but we haven't advertised it, so I did want to bring it out here and make sure that if people are interested in serving, there is a seat on the DPW Commission open.
Frank, do we need a dual meeting with the DPW Commissioners, the present ones? Like we did the last time? Yes.
If anyone's interested, please notify this office. You can go on the web and fill out the volunteer form, and it will come right to us.
Okay, set October meeting dates? October 6th?
6th and 20th.
And 20th? Is that okay with everybody?
Yep.
Okey-dokey. For closure sale, all business.
We sold the land, well, we sold the house on Lazell Street. There's no chance it's going to be renovated. It's going to be a tear down. The good news is we got $186,000 on the auction, which kind of surprised me, but now we'll follow through what has to be done to actually complete the sale. Just wanted to bring the board up to date.
Thanks, Frank. And finally, town administrator retirement.
Yes, I expect that my last day will be October 13th. I know that the board will want to consider what you will do in the interim. Obviously, you'll need an interim administrator, and I don't know when the board wants to deal with that. You want to put that on the next agenda? Or do you want to deal with it now?
Why don't we, why don't we put it on the October 6th agenda?
Okay.
And I see that that date is right in between October 6th and 20th, Frank. Nice move. Nicely played. Yes. That exhausts our agenda.
I have a question.
Motion to adjourn. Yes, Brian?
When Chief Hanlon brought up the idea of an application for any events that require police presence, is that something he's asking us to work on, or is he going to work on that?
I took it as his request for us to do something, and I think, I'm not sure. It's going to require some research, but I think it has to happen in the way of a bylaw.
Okay.
But,
Can we have him do some homework and to present us with something that we can be looking at?
Very definitely.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Good thought, good thought, Brian. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn is in order?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Randy?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes, and we are out of here. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.